If you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
Amen.
Amen. Michael, if you'll please take the roll.
Councilman Lloyd has to be excused. Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Pro Tem Nick.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March 11th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Before we move on to the city administrator's report, I would like to make an announcement. Well, I don't think like the proper word. But for those who are not aware, this will be Councilman Marcos's last council meeting. We will get into that further, but Councilman Marcos has decided to resign and enjoy life. So just want everyone to be aware of that as we go through tonight's meeting. And now, the city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and fellow residents. The DCC is covering all the expenses for Sergeant Richard Hamilton to attend hazmat training in Kentucky in April. The fire department delivered a healthy baby at a home on March 9th. I do not know which sex. I could not figure that out today. Our fire marshal will begin commercial fire inspections this year at the beginning of April. DPS started street sweeping in the city last week, and they will continue until the snow flies. DPS is also determining which roads to improve this year based on driving conditions and PESA ratings. This is for the smaller sections of the city, since we're doing a large section of Manor this year. APEC Baseball has over two, 525 kids registered. This is the largest number in 10 years. Practices start on April 20th. The farmer's market will begin Friday, May 2nd, and will now take place at the old movie theater site moving forward. Just a reminder that shred day and styrofoam collection takes place on Saturday, April 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the parking lot behind Prestige. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report? Motion. Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We'll now move on to public comments. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address. And the only other thing we ask is that you please keep your comments civil. Thank you. We want to make sure that the speaker is on for you. It might not be.
Oh, hello. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We are here to represent the Allen Park Players, which is Allen Park High School's drama club. My name is Delaney Singleton, and I am the Director of Allen Park Players. Along with me today, I have students Gavin Lehman and Lizzie Claus. In the event of the end of Theater in Our Schools Month, we are here to invite you to our last performance of the year, our fundraiser miscast cabaret. In addition to the invitation, the Educational Theater Association is holding a grant contest for Theater in Our Schools Month. As a requirement of the contest, we are to visit policyholders and official meetings to spread the joy of Theater in Our Schools Month. We have some flyers here for you.
If you could give them to the clerk, and he'll make sure that we get them. I was just going to ask if you had material.
Yes, absolutely. We have more. And if it is okay with you, part of the grant contest is that we need proof for everything that we do. And part of that in our rubric, it says that we should take a picture with you while we're here. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
See, what, how do we, should we stand with you, or I wasn't sure.
Would you like someone else to take the picture for?
Yes, I have someone here for us.
Yeah. Why don't you stand in front of us, and we'll stand up so that I know.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Delaney, when is the play?
It's April 30th.
April 30th, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Laura Karate, and I live on Jonas Avenue. I have spent the last few weeks trying to find a place to recycle batteries and used cooking oil, which has presented, like, a greater challenge than I ever thought it would. And I understand, we do have a few hazardous waste days that I know. And I can figure out something for, you know, saving up oil and things like that. But with the batteries, it's so easy for ki- I have two kits. And I filled, in the last year, a five-gallon bucket with video game controller battery, you know, things like that. And so I think about what the average house does, and I thought if it's possible that we get some kind of box maybe out front in the lobby where residents could drop them off, because it's saving them up. People, if I know that I can just come and drop them real quick, I'll do that. If I have to save them and save them and save them, and then it's a Saturday that's hazardous waste day, and I'm going to the zoo that day, or what, you know, that kind of thing. So it was just a thought. And the second thing is that I am also a historical commissioner, and we have our flea market coming up on June 21st and 22nd. And we are still looking for vendors and to fill the space, and you can be a retail, like a farmer's market-type vendor, or we are also just like a household garage sale-type items and things like that. So on the Allen Park Historical Facebook page, you can find information and...
The city website.
In the city website. Yeah. So I got it. That's it. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Ray Augustine Quant. Couple of things today. I want to, personally, want to thank Dennis for everything you have done. It's not easy. You've done a great job. You will be missed, especially your special phrases during the commission, during our meeting. It's not easy for any of you. It's a very tough job. You know? But enjoy life. It is stressful some days, and stress isn't a good thing for none of us. But without, another thing is, I've been coming to this meeting for quite some time. The last couple of meetings, I've been really coming up here about the citizens. I'm going to ask for the extra minute every single meeting. That's very important for the citizens. It might not sound like a lot, you're only given four. But I've been at a couple of other meetings where they allow us to talk twice. At the beginning and the end, and we used to be able to do that a long time ago. I don't understand why we doesn't put a resolution and just do it. You could have done it easily today, any of you. You're allowed to do that with the open, you know, with, with the, just the way that your meetings are set up. You don't have to wait for nothing special. Just one single extra minute. And that doesn't mean I won't even come up here and use it. Maybe you give me my extra minute, maybe I won't even come up here at all. This ain't funny no more. This is about us. You've been elected for us. I went to a town hall meeting just the other day, and I met a senator. This senator sat and talked for approximately, I would say, a good half an hour. And there's probably 200 people there. He allowed every single person to come up and ask as many questions as they wanted. And he answered them. And guess how long it took to get out of there? One hour. Because they asked a question, he was right there, and he answered. Sometimes that's what I, we would like. We don't have, you, I know this is only comments time, but it would be nice that we can kind of open it up just a little bit sometimes to allow us to have not a debate, not a debate. Just a couple of simple questions and simple answers. That's all I'm asking. Nothing special. That ain't that hard. The battery thing, that is, let's work for that. See what we can do. Can we get a container that we can go someplace and drop off batteries? Did you ever go to one of these hazardous waste meetings and try to drop off your stuff? It will take you hours in those lines. I sat there one time for three and a half hours. Something that simple. Another thing like, I would like to have come up here, I'd like to have the police depart, police chief, fire chief, come up here at a couple of meetings, at least once a week, once a week, once a month, and give us a little report. But also for us, tell us about smoke detectors. Can we get them free? What about smo- what about carbon monoxide sensors? Can we get those free? What about all the scams that are being done, day in and day out? Maybe they can come here in front of you, us, where they are up, where they're being videotaped, and the information can be given to us here. Thank you very much. I guess my time's up. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Claire McNally Bailey, and I live on Philomene in Allen Park. We ca- several, I'm going to read this. Several Allen Park taxpayer and voter citizens went to the planning commissioner meeting on March 11th, and we went to the council meeting on March 25th. These concerned Allen Park residents spoke during the public comment time. Why did they speak? A major change that would drastically affect the citizens of Allen Park. Word out on the street was that the city was recommending a text amendment change, where the city was recommending the change or removal of the word "remove" the 40,000-gallon gas capacity text amendment for gas stations. Many of the local residents did not, many of the local residents who this gas station would completely affect their lives didn't really know about it. It was an internal text amendment, and there wasn't a requirement to alert local people because it wasn't a variance change. Luckily, a local business owner put an urgent notice in their doors two days before the planning commission meeting. Regarding the Allen Park residents' comments at both meetings, I was surprised on the comments of the meetings at the council meeting on March 25th, after reviewing the televised meeting. We did go to the planning commission to talk about the problems, and we heard during the council meeting that some of the people on the commission didn't appreciate our comments, but a few of the commissioners were maybe a little peeved the people were there, and there were rebel rousers getting the people to come out to speak out. We're not rebel rousers, and the people that sent this to us are not rebel risers. They were alerting the concerned Allen Park taxpayers. We're also aware that the planning commission is working on a 10-year master plan for Allen Park. The council members are elected. We don't know much about who the planning commissioners are. The residents do not want to destroy this nice, quiet city with the noisy gas station at the corner of Park Avenue and Southfield where Rite Aid was. We discovered that Sheets had a pre-application meeting with the city to knock down all the retail shops at the Rite Aid location and build a super huge gas station operating 24 hours a day, including a noisy made-to-order food department with indoor-outdoor eating with loud music 24 hours a day. The planning's commission job is to decide what business fits into the zone and decides what should go where, and they can work with the developer to see where they can put it. Regarding the people who spoke, the planning commissioner doesn't really, was sad that they really wouldn't know what it would be like if they put this gas station in, in the act, in the residence, because a lot of residents on Philomene were talking about it. Also, we were told to encourage the citizens to keep our opinions and keep telling you, but keep in mind the planning commission are making the decisions for the city. I would suggest people watch the March 22nd meeting so that I don't say things wrong. The reason why the citizens are speaking to both the council and the planning commission is to alert you that we do not, we do not want any ordinance changes regarding removing the 40,000-gallon gas capacity for the underground storage tanks for gas stations, and we reject a 24-hour indoor-outdoor fast-food restaurant close to the residential areas. No changes should be made to conform with the pre-planning application of Sheets. Thank you for your time, and I assure you that people are upset now, and we will not let time pass where we forget and move on. Someone said, "This is the start of a very long process, and we would like the people in charge to not waste time anymore and just tell the massive gas station that we don't want it downtown." Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Tyler from Larmy. Larm, Larmay, I don't know. I think it's French. No one, nobody really knows. Anyways, hey, I go to look at the meeting notes today. Whoever's keeping these up on the website's doing a great job. I noticed that here you have a closed session for litigation on the Allen Park retirees situation. I don't know what it is. So I go over to the part of the website where it talks about that board, and I click down, and there's all the meetings, and I said, "That's great. Let me click on that," and they're all dead links. So maybe that's what the litigation's about, that you guys aren't publishing the, the meeting minutes or agendas, but they're, they're all dead links. There was one that was in a Word doc, a little different format, but the rest of them are dead links. So if anyone can look into that, also, if you go to the planning commission website, those agendas and meeting notes, this is for the public, really. If you check those out, it's, it's laid out. Whoever's taking those notes is doing a great job. You can see a lot, you can see all the citizens' comments, and you get to kind of see a lot of different perspectives without all the, you know, the Facebook. So anyways, thanks a lot, guys.
Good evening. Alex Lane, Angelique Avenue. I just want to come up and say something about the Sheetz stuff that we've all seen all over Facebook. Just, I don't, as a resident, like when other residents speak for me. So just wanted to let you know, it's not unanimous from the residents. There is a very vocal group of us who are, think that it's a fantastic idea. We, I do agree with some of the stuff that the person two times before me said, though. There's a lot of closed-door stuff that the residents don't necessarily feel like their voices are being heard, and especially for people who do live right there. Probably a good idea to encourage that they have some say, because it will affect them directly. But not outsor- outside say. Everyone in the city should have a voice. But it's not unanimous for the residents, but I do think that the council, the planning commission, all that can do a bit better job of including residents when they will be affected. That's all. Thank you.
Charles Blood and Champagne. First off, keep supporting your local businesses, City Coffee House, just saying. And so that those businesses can stay in Allen Park, so that we don't have these types of empty buildings in our downtown. Next, to the suggestion for the battery situation. Where I work at the Henry Four all around, they have what, they look like, like a hourglass kind of look, but like a larger kind of tube thing. And people put their batteries in those, and then they go and get either, I don't know, destroy it, recycle it, whatever. Just an, just an idea for C Hall or the city buildings to have maybe one of those kind of things. And then, yeah, and to Ray's, had another minute. How many times he had to come up here for just another minute? Again, before, when these meetings started at seven, back in the day, because it, it was a lot more topic situations, yes. We had the three minutes at the beginning, three minutes at the end. And then, yes, it, because it started at seven, and sometimes because of the situations that occurred in the past, it lasts until almost midnight. I understand that, but I think Allen Park has been a lot better than what it was at that time. So again, it's just a minute. Not asking much. And then lastly, came up here, again, to, I want to thank Mr. Dennis Marcos for his service, calling him my right-hand man when we were sitting up there, all the laughs that we had, and just, and, and again, the, what today is and all those comments, always wonderful here, and great job. Again, been there. I understand being up there, and, you know, my phone number. Message me whenever you want to hang out and stuff, and, and thank you for your service. Stay positive.
Thank you. If there's no further individuals coming up, we will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of claims and accounts and payroll report under purchasing, and a license and permit for a parade permit from Dan Martinez of the Downriver Runners to hold their annual Allen Park Street Fair 5K on Saturday, August 2nd, starting at 7:00 a.m. with the wave. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Then now move on to our resolutions. First resolution is to approve the request from APEC and Parks and Recreation to approve Savone Cement, to add ADA-compliant walkways and bleachers with funds from APEC Board and the remaining funds of $9,000 from accounts 10175178300 and $8,350 from account 10175178400. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Carr is going to explain where this is going.
Yep. So a brief backstory on this. APEC approached us about a month and a half ago. They have a brand-new board. A lot of them are new, a few returners, but they have some ideas for improvements that they see when they go to other cities. You know, we've redone all of our diamonds, but, you know, we really haven't touched much on bleachers. ADA accessibility is something Rob and I spoke about with our five-year master plan. And so APEC, coincidentally enough, kind of joined in on this, where they wanted, being the largest league in their group of leagues, they want to host many more events, playoffs, tournaments, et cetera. And Champagne Park being the mega park of the city merits well with the new parking lot to do that. So they wanted to do better bleachers, ADA sidewalks. We don't have that there. So we kind of cleaned it up a little bit. They wanted to just spend APEC money and just go out there and do it. Well, we said, you know, this is city. We have to do things in order. So we said, "Just tell us how much money and be willing to donate to us. We will help you along, and then whatever's left, we will take the balance, as you see on the agenda." So they're going to split it between brand-new bleachers and new sidewalks and bleacher pads to surround Diamond 3. Pretty much the cost is right down the middle for this whole project, so pending your approval. As Rob said in the pre-meeting, we will likely have this completed by middle of April, when APEC starts practicing.
And it's not in, in the resolution, but they are committing to $18,000.
Yeah, they are committing to $18,000 to split the cost with us.
And, and the bleachers are going to be ADA compliant also.
Yep. They're going to, they're going to be new aluminum, because we have wood bleachers right now. So each side's going to have a 15-foot aluminum bleacher to the ground with fencing on the back wall, so it's not open like the other ones don't have a backing. This will have a backing on it. And we actually received delivery of those today, so they're already here.
Well, then, I think it behooves us, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the accounts, the 783 shows the, under Park Supplies. There is no 784. What account is that coming from? Well, there is no 784. I see, I'm missing an eight.
The two accounts should have been Park Supplies and Park Services.
Park Supplies, that's the 783 for the $9,000, the 8350 says accounts 101751784. I don't see a 784 anywhere.
Are, is that on, are you looking at claims and accounts on that? Well, that might be because there's no checks written on that one.
Yeah, 75, 784 is the Park Service line, so we're splitting it from those two accounts.
Yeah, I know. I just didn't see it on here anywhere. Yeah. Well, of course, neither one are posted, but there is no 784. There is a 783. I just wonder, is that a different, is that a comp that's not used, or is it a new comp?
No, it's, those two are actually the longest-standing, the most maintenance accounts we have is Park Service, Park Supply.
Yeah. So you, it's not, there's, nothing was donated or put into that in the last month? Wasn't used at all, 784?
No, those, those accounts really do sit stagnant in the winter time, because they're not doing much outside.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I can help with that a little bit. So in claims and accounts, you don't receive a whole general ledger. So you don't have every account that is in our general ledger. You only have accounts that may have had costs allocated to them.
Right.
By claims and accounts. Okay. Just so you understand.
I just was curious, because it didn't, didn't show any ac- any activity on it.
Like Kyle said, in the winter, Parks doesn't really have maintenance.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Yes. Resolution two is to approve an outdoor event permit for the Streedery to hold a spring social at 5955 Allen Road on April 12th, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions? This came out of the building department. This is similar to the event that the Streedery held, I think, last fall, where they had a chili cook-off, and they invited other businesses in the area to attend, and they had a really nice turnout, and they're doing a lot to not only promote their business, but also other businesses in, in, in Allen Park. So apparently, the fire department, police department, DPS, and building department have reviewed their proposal and have no issues with the event. So barring any questions, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Resolution three is to grant or deny the special regulated use permit for Seven Brew Coffee Restaurant drive-in, drive-through at 14,800 to 14,820 Southfield Road, conditional on meeting all of the planning commission recommendations and pending final approval from the building department. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Somebody going to explain this one?
I can try. This is the...
This is the location that a while back you heard Tropical Smoothie was looking at moving to. Used to have houses there that were demoed many years ago off of Roger and Southfield. That's the same site. The Planning Commission approved this to go through with the site plan. Basically, after you guys vote, if you do approve it, it still has to meet the Building Department recommendations and planning recommendations. If that does not, it will not happen.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Before we go into other business and into a closed session, we will do our elected officials' comments. And I believe Ms. Nick has some comments from Mr. Estimer.
Dennis, Tim, he can't be here, he's in California visiting his brother. But he wanted you to know that he wishes you the best and he's very honored to have served with you and he was very glad that he was able to sit next to you and he wishes you the best.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mizzi.
Dennis, it was a pleasure serving with you. I got to know you after you were on the police commission and I could say it now that he's resigning, but he has still been blamed for the fire at the barn at where Cabrini Grade School is, back in the early 50s, so.
I had an alibi.
Well, they still have an open investigation, Mr. Marcos. It was a pleasure serving with you, thank you. Just want to remind those in Precinct 16 and the Southgate Community Schools that there is a May 6 Milage election. If you get a application for an absentee ballot, that should be coming any day now. The ballots will be going out for the permanent ballot people, probably by the end of the week, all of them out by Monday. And we will not have nine-day early voting for this election, it's just not, the cost is incredible. So just gotta, if you want to vote early, come in and vote an absentee ballot. There's no reason, it's the same thing, you just, it's counted on Election Day. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, God bless and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I'll keep this short just because Dennis wants me to. And it's all on him today. But I just wanted to thank him for his service to the city of Allen Park, not just in his role as a city council member, but on the past commissions and committees that you served on and just the things that you do on a daily basis for the city. I'm going to miss having you sit next to me up here, that's for sure. But again, we understand, we get it. And again, I just want to thank you for your time and service.
Thank you.
Mr. Barr.
I too was told to keep it short. Dennis, thank you for your service. Based on your commissions, the council, you're one in a million. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, I'll do my best. I did want to say, glad to be back, glad to see all my colleagues on council here. Glad to see Tom, City Attorney, and of course, all the great employees, firefighters and police officers to make our city a great place. I want to wish the Tigers a great opening day, that U of M, Michigan State, have a great rest of the tournament. Also want to say, want to wish a happy belated birthday to my son Frankie, who just turned four. And in case you're wondering, when asked how old his mom was, he said she was 10. I also wanted to say happy belated St. Patrick's Day, that's why I'm wearing this outfit one final time. And there's a story to say, when I went to the parade with the downtown Detroit with my wife, that's part of the ladies' agent order of Hiberians, it was a great time. Then we came back to Don Levis and when I was there, I was introduced to Deputy Mayor Mary Foley of County Council of, Cork County Council of Ireland. And she gave me this lapel pin that she wears and all their members and told me that she only gave that pin to selective members in Michigan. Governor, Mayor Dugan of Detroit, Senator Slock, and so I was honored to receive it and really meet her. I also, since I haven't been here, I want to mention Mr. Lally. I'm sure everyone has said, Tony was a dedicated public servant who retiredlessly for Allen Park, councilman and mayor, and he led with integrity and put the needs of the community first. Strong advocate for veterans and member of Cabrini and many other causes. Grateful for his support with my son's autism dinner and, as said before, Tony's impact on the city won't be forgotten. So I want to give my deepest condolences to his family. Rest in peace, Tony. Finally, Dennis, I got to speak by you, Dennis. From our time working here, and I know that I've seen your dedication as a member of council and your level-headed approach and your jokes to me, your presence will definitely be missed. You know, you've always said I'm the most unlikeliest member of council. I disagree. You're making one of the things that makes council great and what people look forward to. I really mean that. When I think about the times, especially, I'll always look back with a smile as we got to know each other, talking about family and music and trying to stop flyers from flying away from the street fair. That still brings a great smile to my face because in between every flyer we talked about, it just, we brought up another random song, it was a great memory. You will be missed. And I also want to thank you and Renee, your beautiful wife, for definitely giving me the kindness that you always shared with my family and continuously. I'm definitely sad to see you leave, but I know you'll keep an eye on Allen Park. Thanks for everything, Dennis.
Thank you. I'm going to read a message that was sent to me today by Mr. Lloyd, who is on spring break with his family. And he asked if I would do this and I said it would be my pleasure and my honor. "I first met Dennis Marcos at the 2019 Meet the Candidate Night. After a pleasant backstage conversation, we gave our remarks to the audience. In his speech, after laying out his qualifications, Dennis did something remarkable. He told the audience that it didn't matter if they voted for him as long as they participated in the democratic process. That's Dennis, a true believer in civic duty. Throughout his time on the council, he encouraged citizens to attend meetings, speak up and get involved. He was a model of what it means to be an elected official, especially at the local level. Dennis's meticulous nature benefited us all. He would comb through budgets, spot even the smallest discrepancies and ask questions that led to greater understanding for all. This dedication wasn't just to help to us on council, it was a service to the people of Allen Park. This selflessness extended into every area of Dennis's life. When I told him this last Christmas that I was learning the guitar and I had a 20-year-old guitar with 20-year-old strings on it, he made sure that I came over and he restrung it and he made sure that it sounded like it was brand-new before I walked out of there. And he did it all because that's the type of person he is. I can truly say that in my time on council, Dennis has made me a better elected official, but more importantly, I feel that I'm a better person for knowing him." Ms. Nick.
Well, before I talk about you, Dennis, I just wanted to give some shout-outs. The new Big B Coffee Shop on E-course is now open. And then earlier this week, the Presbyterian Church celebrated their 93rd anniversary on March 20th. It was built in 1932, so congratulations on that. And then the Allen Park High School Choir, they traveled to South Lyon last week and both their choirs scored with number-one top ratings. And so they will be traveling to the state festival, so good luck to them. Dennis, I haven't been on as long as some of these other people have been with you, but you are our financial guy and I don't know who I'm going to ask now about the budget. But it's been a pleasure serving with you and you've always, every time I've called, you've answered or called me back and answered my questions. So Matt, I'm going to need your help. We have got something for you that Len Perotta and the audience made for us and we all signed it. So our signatures are in the back, so we don't want you to forget us. You know, we hope you like it and it'll sit on your desktop or anywhere you'd like. So thank you very much. And Matt will carry that out for you because it's kind of heavy. You got Renee.
She's been carrying everything for me for the last year.
Well, I'm not quite sure about my closing comments. It really has been a pleasure knowing Dennis and working with Dennis. And it's kind of like, I don't feel as though I'm saying goodbye to him because he's going to be around and he promised me that he was always reachable. And if for nothing else, I would probably call him twice a month to get those little sayings to use at the end of council meetings because we're going to miss those. But I think Dan hit it pretty much the nail on the head. I got to know Dennis even like at the street fairs and the people who knew him and the people he worked with and the people he helped. And had a funny little story about, I told someone recently that at one street fair, Dennis was in the information booth and a newer fellow was in there named Ed. And at the end of the day, well, probably at the end of about half an hour, I felt like I was a matchmaker. Because all of a sudden, these two gentlemen who had never met one another were talking bands and guitars and music and I couldn't get them to stop talking to each other. I mean, this was the information booth we were supposed to be working. But it was a pleasure to observe them. And I think before they left, Dennis said, you've got to come over to my house on Sunday, I've got some things to show you. And that just grew from that. And that's, I think, a reflection of what Dennis is also. A very giving person, very understanding person, sharp-minded. And again, he has assured me that I can call and ask him for questions and I'll bet he'll take calls from Nancy, too. So we wish you well in your retirement. We want it to be long and happy and get that back taken care of. And thank you very much. It's a pleasure knowing you and that's about all I can say. At this point, I will ask for a motion to convene. Oh. That's right.
I'm done.
Well, somebody else took up all your time, right?
Yeah, who's next? I do want to thank everybody. The council, it's been a privilege. Mayor, Mike, Tim. Mike, you really helped me out a lot many times. Everybody here, all the department heads, all the employees. I've learned so much from you guys, always there to answer questions. Even when I ask dumb ones and ones that I shouldn't know the answers to. You've always been there and treated me with kindness and always answered my questions and helped me grow as a council person. This isn't something I ever planned on doing. Things happen and when I feel I can't do the job anymore, it's time to turn it over. And that's kind of how it's gone. I've had, some, you know, I've had some problems in the past year and a half. And when I feel I can't do what I was hired to do, take care of the city the correct way and be a spokesperson for the citizens and I can't do it right and I can't do it to my full potential, it's time to give it to somebody who will. And it's pretty much what I'm doing. It's been a great time, a learning experience, made a lot of new friends and I appreciate everything that everybody has done for me. So I will be around, my phone still works, although I don't always look at it. But again, I want to thank everybody, the citizens for putting me here, all the employees, department heads for working with me, helping me, and everybody at the dis table. Always backing me, so thank you all. And I'll see you soon.
Dennis, what happened today?
Oh, wait, there's more.
Ah, that's right.
But wait, today is International Waffle Day. Today is also National Lobster Newburg Day. And on March 25th of 1954, the first color TV went on sale. And on March 25th, 1866, Vernors began selling their soda. They're the oldest-selling soda in the country. And it was created by pharmacist James Werner, so that's my information for today. Thanks, everybody.
Now I will call for a motion to move into a closed session.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. We'll take a roll call vote and I have one other thing to say after that.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion by Councilman Nick, supported by Councilman Barr, to convene into closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with the Allen Park retirees as permitted under MCL 15.268 subsection E. Shall we convene Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Councilman Nick.
Yes.
Councilman Marcos.
Yes.
Mayor McLeod.
Yes.
Councilman Schleck.
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius.
Yes.
The yeses have it, we shall convene.
Thank you. I understand that there was a large cake that was also brought into our offices and we.
Have it right out in the hallway.
Have it out in the hallway, so anyone who would like to have some cake, please help yourself. It was given by a friend of Mr. Marcos's who thought he deserved to be celebrated, so.
And then also, Mayor, we were going to take a picture with Dennis.
Yes.
With his flag, so.